Are we all good to go?
We are now recording.
All right. Well, welcome everyone and thank you for joining us for the Mountain Sage Community School Annual Town Hall Program. My name is Beau Bump and I have the honor of getting us started tonight. This town hall event is something the Board of Directors puts on every year around this time. And at least in my mind, it really has three functions. First, it's the board's opportunity to host and connect with members of the school community. Our monthly board meetings are open to the public, but a lot of our work is somewhat behind the scenes. And this gives us a chance to share with you what we do. Second, it's an opportunity to present on a few topics of interest and to remind folks of where to find information on those topics. And third, the best part, we get to hear from you field questions and really learn from you what is on your mind with regard to the school. So we will jump in here in a moment. I will introduce the board members and preview our program. But first, I want to take this opportunity on behalf of the board to recognize and thank our school director, the administration, the staff, and our great faculty. This has been a year like no other that has presented challenge after challenge. It has not been easy and the school has had to pivot and adjust plans more times than you can shake a stick at. But through great adversity, the dedication and steadfastness and creativity of this group has shown brightly. And we cannot thank them enough for steering the school through this difficult time. So thank you, thank you, thank you to Liv, the administration, the staff, and the faculty. We start off all of our board meetings by reading aloud the school's mission. And I thought that might be good to do tonight as well. Our mission. Mountain Sage Community School offers Waldorf-inspired arts-integrated education, fully incorporating sustainable living practices into student learning. Each child is empowered to cultivate meaningful connections to their intellectual, physical, emotional, social, and creative capacities in healthy, safe, and beautiful learning environments. Through a supportive community of peers, parents, and teachers, each child will become a confident, self-directed, and engaged learner invested in their own education. So now I would like to introduce the board members and ask them to wave when they hear their name. There's additional information about each board member on the school's website, so we'll keep it brief. And if I don't see them here, we'll just move on to the next. John Pointer. I don't see John. At least on my screen. Melinda Kurst. There's Melinda. Mary Wolf. Hi, Mary. Eric Richardson. Brian Kimball. And Rachel Sedhalter. So that rounds out the board with just John absent. So one question you might have is, what does the board do? Well, one source of information you can look to for a partial answer is Article 2 of the school's bylaws, which lists the responsibilities of the board within the school's structure. In summary, the board is charged with oversight of the school's educational and noneducational goals and objectives, financial oversight, including budget and expenditure approval, charter agreement negotiation with PSD, reporting compliance, supporting the school director, and I'll read this last part verbatim, taking any other action necessary or proper to safeguard and advance the interests of the school. So this last line item really gives the board a lot of leeway in terms of supporting the school. Now, as a practical matter, the more board members we have, the more we can do. So the phrase "many hands make light work" certainly applies. And to put it simply, we need more board members. Under the bylaws, the board can have between five and nine members. And currently, we have seven, but three will complete their terms in just a few months by the end of May. We have one candidate, Stephanie Cosby, who's here, who we expect to join. So that will put us at five, which is right at the minimum. So we could really, really use four more board members heading into next school year. So please, if it's something you've thought about, you're wondering about, reach out to us to learn more. We would love to talk with you more about it. It's an all-volunteer board and it's a great way to support the school. So let me run down the program that you're about to hear very quickly. First, you'll hear from School Director Liv about the state of the school. Next, you'll hear about the school financials from Brian Kimball. And after that, you'll hear from Melinda Kurst about board membership and the election. And I suspect she will introduce Stephanie. After that, we'll have Q and A. And at any point in time, please feel free to enter a question into the chat. I think Eric is tracking those. We'll make sure those get to the right person so we can get those answered. Again, thank you very much for taking your time to join us tonight. Or if you're watching this recorded, to watch this as a recorded program. It's great to see all your faces. Thank you again. And take it away, Liv.
Thanks, Beau. All right. Hi, everybody. Thanks for joining us tonight. As Beau mentioned, my name is Liv Helmrich. I'm the school director at Mountain Sage. And just want to kind of share a few things and looking forward to hearing any questions that you have when that time comes. So I'll just kind of follow the the topics outlined on the agenda for my update. Starting with the phases, so if you've been paying attention to our communications, you know that our, we're likely to continue in Phase 3 through the 2021 school year. And right now is a time where, you know, we're, we're beginning our reflection process with regard to the path that we've traveled through 2020, 2021 school year and looking ahead to next year. So of course, none of us know what the future holds or what that will look like, but that is happening now. And, you know, we'll see how, if, or how phases will play into our school year next year. And of course, we're going to be sharing these updates with you along the way. So, you know, paying attention to the beat that comes from connect@mountainsage.org is a great way to make sure that you're catching the all-school news updates and through your class teacher emails as always. So facilities, this next tireless. We are a unique space because we are a school that exists in kind of a retrofitted office building in an office park, as you know, with amazing natural areas all around us, which is really a gift. Part of the work for this school year was to really work through the process of updating our facility, improving safety in the way that we are in our space, you know, adding air purifiers to each room, improving our HVAC systems, all these kinds of things. So we're using our building in some different ways this year because we have half the kids in our facility at a given time. So as we are looking ahead to next year, we're going to continue to evaluate all the ways that we can continue to support student and staff health and wellbeing in our space. And one of the main things that's happening right now is a lot of outdoor space. We've created some outdoor learning spaces that our teachers are using every day that it's not freezing. And even when it's a little chilly, so a reminder to, when you send your kids to school, have them prepared to go out in all kinds of weather. Or the weather policy that, as it exists right now, is in our parent handbook. I think it's on page 17. That can be found on our website. So just remember, send kids to go out. This going outside allows for some mask-free learning as long as we can stay physically distanced and, you know, creates a sense of freedom in an otherwise pretty changed learning environment this year with the cohort structure and masks and all of that. Jumping ahead to the next topic, hiring. So hiring season will be upon us soon. It's hard to believe in February that we're talking about hiring for next school year. But now is the time when we're really kind of analyzing the needs in our organization and making plans. We hired several new staff members in anticipation of our Phase 3 opening. So we have two new paras with us right now, Maria and Jennifer. And then we hired a new health tech, Cher. And we also have a kindergarten assistant. And then there were some staff shifting around to accommodate different staff needs. So it was a big January and we're really grateful for all of our new staff who've jumped in in a very unconventional school year. And as we're looking ahead to next year, hiring, of course, fits hand-in-hand with the program development for the coming school year. So program development is the other thing that we're really looking at. This year, of course, we've been kind of operating a full schedule for kids Monday through Thursday, with Fridays being a remote day for every student. Depending on how things evolve, you know, we're looking maybe perhaps again at a five-day attended live session program. So we'll see how that goes. But another part of program development and kind of evaluating things for next year, we're really looking at our homeschool enrichment program and what shape that will take for the seven-through-12-year-olds. We'll see how that goes, maybe experiencing some changes there. And our Forest Kindergarten Homeschool Enrichment Program, which is for five- and six-year-olds. This, we are going to give this another go. We were not able to, to bring that to fruition this past year with, you know, starting in a remote phase. Pretty counterintuitive with the Forest Kinder Program. But we're going to give it a go for next school year. And the other thing that we're looking at and evaluating right now is the future of Mountain Sage Virtual and what form that will take. So again, pay attention to the all-school communications. That's how we'll be letting people know, keeping you posted on our progress and development in these areas. Okay. So how's it going now? And I hope that you'll share some of your experiences when the time comes for questions, if that feels appropriate. My overall impression is, you know, everybody who is at school and able to be in the physical building is excited to be there. And it's mingled with a little bit of stress because this is different. We're in the midst of a pretty big transition coming even now. Here, what are we, three weeks into it? Four weeks into it? Big transition after many months of remote learning. But lots of happy kids and, you know, we're all getting used to it. And I think things are going well and I appreciate all the parent compliance when it comes to, you know, dropping off, picking up. All of our, the ways we navigate the space has really changed. So appreciate the cooperation, collaboration, and helping us in those realms. One thing that is proving to be a frequent event slash challenge is the need for substitute teachers. So now with COVID protocols being what they are, when we don't have, when, you know, someone has a runny nose, the teacher has a runny nose, or they wake up with a sore throat, we are in communication with those teachers and, you know, they can't come in that day. So we're really finding that we, there's a high need for subs right now. So I just want to put a plug in for substitute teachers. We're always looking for substitute teachers. And you can email Nancy Sexton if you're interested. And that's in S E X T O N at mountainsage.org. So if you're interested, we could, we could really, you could help us out. The other thing that I think is one of the biggest changes right now that we're experiencing and that the kids are experiencing along with us are the hybrid classrooms, right? We're, we're trying to meet so many different needs. We have our A group, we have our B group, we have our MSV group. And so at different points during the week, almost every class is a hybrid classroom. And so our teachers are experiencing this third way to teach, right? They know how to teach in person, all the ways that, all the years passed, and they taught remotely. Now they're teaching hybrid in some cases. And so it's a tricky thing to figure out. And all of our teachers are so dedicated and passionate about their work. They, they never want anyone to feel like they're getting half of the attention. And this is a tricky scenario. So, you know, a lot of gratitude for your patience and grace during this time and a request for just communicating with us if something's not working for you. Communicate directly with the teacher or, you know, Hillary and I can also always help with that. But just, it's a big shift. But we're doing it and it's going well. So we just kind of day by day right now. In terms of safety, of course, you all know we're wearing masks in the building at all times when we're outside and folks can stay physically distanced. You know, masks don't have to be worn out there. Other updates that are happening in the health and safety realm, we are now going to be shifting into a time where we can start to test our own staff. So we hope that that'll alleviate some of the sub pressure perhaps. And get quick testing, COVID test results for our staff. And then the vaccinations for school employees have begun in the state of Colorado. And so that's new too. And, you know, different teachers are in different positions with that, but this is exciting news. And the last thing I think that was on my list of things to talk about was just an assessment update. And this really has to do with the state standardized assessments. So Colorado Department of Education, as part of federal law, there is a state standardized assessment taken by third through, I guess, in our schools, third through eighth graders. English language arts, math, and science in fifth and eighth grade and social studies some years. Last year, last spring, these assessments were canceled because we had all just gone into that period of remote learning. The determination about whether or not these assessments will proceed this year, it looks like the soonest we would receive a determination is end of February. And I think that's an optimistic date, but this is, you know, there's districts all over the map with this one. Lawmakers with different opinions, but we'll see how that plays into things. And whether or not that'll be part of our springtime experience. It, it could be tricky. So I'm watching that one and, of course, we'll be keeping you posted on that. So covered quite a bit of ground pretty quickly, I hope, but uh, thanks for listening.
Great. Thanks very much, Liv. Now we're going to move to Brian to hear about school financials update.
Hello. Real quick, though, there are a couple of questions in chat. Do we want to address those? Or does Liv want to address those before I move on?
I can take a look here. Okay, the question, what's going on with the playground? There seems to have been a lot of changes, including no more shade sales. Well, thanks for that question, Eric. So, yes, there were some, there, there were some very longstanding burms with tree stumps that housed many wasps. Those we cleared away. And we also, we, and previously, our shade sales were held up by wooden beams. I think it was last year in a strong wind, one of those beams came down. And so we determined, you know, we just don't feel safe about having those wooden beams. So now we're kind of laying the groundwork for some forward momentum with our playground for the future and kind of thinking about an overall design that will be exciting for kids. But this is a, this is one of those areas where we are currently not the owners of our playground, which, you know, that's always a point of conversation. The board's working on our long-term facility plan. But that makes it a little tricky too. Finding fun things to do in the boring zones out there is definitely something that we'll keep working on. And yeah, so those are those changes. And then a question about teachers being required to get COVID vaccinations. No, we are not requiring teachers to get COVID vaccinations.
Okay. Thanks. I didn't want those to linger out there for too long and I know they were put up as you were talking, so. Again, my name is Brian Kimball. I am on the facilities committee as well as the finance committee. And I'll be giving the school financial update. What I'm going to do is share just a couple of graphs. We'll go through sort of high level, what the budget looks like, how it's broken out into pieces. And then a couple of different trend graphs over the years and how kind of, as a school, we've been doing managing those finances. So let me share that window. And can everybody see? I get a thumbs up. Okay. Excellent. So what you're looking at are, just like I said, the buckets where the overall budget gets broken up into. So as you, you know, our focus a lot of times or all the time is on our staff. So you can see the top biggest buckets are maintaining our salaries of our teachers and their benefits, which is where it really should be, right, is making sure that we have the right people teaching our, our children and that they're compensated well. So after that, you can see other larger buckets are the operations and maintenance, equipment, business services, special education, support services, et cetera. So just to clarity on a couple of things, the support services are are actually, whoa, sorry, skipped ahead. Support services are like professional development, memberships, PSD support, marketing, internet, phone, those types of support services. And then student support includes the technology that we've had to, to bring in licensing fees for online curriculum or things like that. And then nurse consultants, so things that definitely go directly to, to supporting our students. And then supplies are those in-class student materials, teachers' class, class budgets, festival budgets, kinder lunches, those types of things. Does anybody have any questions on the overall budget?
Well, Brian, I think I know the answer. I think I know the answer, but the, the cost of our facilities is a relatively large one budget item. So does that fall under operations and maintenance?
Operations and maintenance, correct. So moving on to kind of show the difference between our per pupil revenue or PPR, as it's referred to, and the overall enrollment. And FTE is the full-time equivalent. So this number represents the homeschooling children as well, but at a percentage of the full-time student who's in class. And you can see year to year, from last school year to this school year, there's quite a large drop. Actually, lower than two years ago, our PPR per student. So we've had to make a lot of adjustments and just glancing over our our budget amendments this year, we went through six versions of our budget as we're getting different numbers from the state, from the districts, and trying to really hone in on what our overall budget is going to look like this year. So there's a lot of adjustments that we make as a board and as groups just to maintain the financial wellbeing of the school. And you'll also notice the difference in enrollment year-over-year from last year. It dropped pretty significantly and that was primarily due to homeschooling students. But you also noticed that we're like nationwide and especially across Colorado, the data that we have available. There was a very significant drop in enrollment almost at all schools, so. So we follow that trend, but we are still maintaining the health of, of the school pretty well. So, and I'll show you that on the next slide, which is overall revenue versus expenses. And obviously, revenue totals are down from last year, but the primary reason why it's not down as far as it normally would be is because we were able to get a lot of federal grants that increased. To give some reference, last year, we got, we received $15,000 in federal grant money. And this year, the school year, we received over $230,000 in grant money. So it offset most of the costs that we incurred, updating our facilities, the things that Liv were talking about, like in-room air purifiers, various PPE expenses, all the technology, et cetera. So we actually were able to, or at least so it, it looks now, we have our, our working budget in the positive, just under $100,000 in overall margin for, on the positive side. So, so we're looking good at least this year and thankfully for those extra federal grant monies, we should end up the year in the black. So curious if I see a couple of chat messages. Oh, somebody lost audio. So there's the question about, thank you, Beau, who sets the PPR? Which is a great question. And, and interestingly, it's set at, we, we are a state-level minimum PPR. I'm going to mess up this term and I'm probably going to have to refer to Amanda to clarify this. But we receive the minimum funds possible for a PPR per, per pupil. So, and that is set at the state level. And we receive that minimum and it was changed probably four times in the fall, with the final change happening in December timeframe just before the break. And Amanda clarified that also in chat. She says the state. So thank you for that confirmation.
Brian?
Yes.
Am I understanding this correctly? That by looking at this chart, that the PPR is the main way that we fund our school? And that if people were to, if we were to make sure that we were to have full classes, that that would be the best way to fortify our budget?
Yes. Yeah, that, this is our, absolutely our primary funding source. And, and we bucket this as a sort of under our local sources, which includes student fee, student fees, like the supply fees that we ask every family to pay. Our mill levy overrides actually went a long way to increasing our, our teacher salaries just a couple of years ago. So those were big bumps for us, but the primary income source for the school is the PPE, PPR. Are there any other, any other question? Okay. Just to let everybody know, all of our financial documents are available through financial transparence. We have, we follow full financial transparency laws and, and share everything on our website. So if you go through our governance links, you can gain access to most of what I've just shared. And if you have any further questions, you can always reach out to the board or And if you have any further questions, you can always reach out to the board or to administration, I think, and they'll help clarify it. So I will stop sharing and pass it on to Melinda, who will cover the board membership and the election.
Right. Get that, and I think Eric's going to say the same thing. Looks like there's another question in the chat. Liv, I don't know if you saw that or anybody else, but there's a question, max enrollment. So why don't we get that responded to?
Sure, that's a great question. I'm actually defer that one to Liv.
For our full K eight program, our, again, some of our classrooms don't accommodate the class of 26. 26 is about the max, is the typical max size for our K eight program. Our max is around 325-ish for our K eight program. That doesn't include our homeschool enrichment program. And since we're still kind of developing that picture, not quite sure what the max will be for that enrollment in the coming year.
And if I might just fill in just from the budget perspective, our very first preliminary budget, we were budgeting 315 FTE, full-time equivalent students. And our final enrollment number was 278. See significant difference there. And obviously we've, we've made the adjustments along the way to make sure that we're, we're still operating in a positive.
Um, Brian, I think it's worth a little bit of clarification too, um, that a lot of that was our homeschool enrichment program, right? Where students only count as a one half of a full-time student, but you know, a lot of families, I think we're looking to the homeschool enrichment to sort of be their augmentation for socialization and things like that. So that, that program took a bit of a hit, right?
Yeah, yeah, I mentioned that a little bit earlier. I, I didn't really go into detail about it, but yeah, we, we had budgeted about 40 homeschool students. And I think now we have less, maybe a dozen, maybe a few more than that. So that's, that's a big difference going from essentially 20 FTE students to maybe six or seven. It's a big, you know, a big hit when your PPR also drops over 5%. Okay.
Brian, I'm sorry, before we go on, I, I got pulled away because my computer decided to update in the middle of this. But I wanted to ask, and I'm sorry if you already addressed this, but our, on our budget, one of the things that we, we do is we have reserves and in terms of people feeling okay with sort of the health of the school and where we're at, if it wasn't asked already, sort of where are we from a 10,000 foot level in terms of the health of the school?
Great question. And I just pulled it up. So our projected, projected end of year budget reserves in our sort of savings account, if you will, is about 900,000, which is above the average for schools of our similar size. So we're, we're actually in really good shape there. And there's, I didn't go into it, but just to kind of clarify also how we're spending it. We, we spend above average on some of these key ratios like salary and benefits, building lease expenses to our PPR. And then the committed fund balance on hand. So just to, I'll cover that and try to make sure that it's clear, but the recommended ratio for our goal, so to speak, of our total budget to our salary and benefits compared to the PPR plus that mill levy would be between 50 and 70%. And right now our ratio is sitting at 79%. So we're, we're spending heavy on that side and I think that we're, we all can safely say that that's, that's just fine to, to pay our teachers well and have, have the benefits there. The building leasing expenses though, is a bit high. Our goal is to be less than or equal to 12% of our PPR. And right now we're at 15%. So from a, from a finance, from a facilities committee perspective, our long-term goal is obviously to reduce that and to offer more space for students and to expand into a two-track system where we'll have two classes for every grade. Which obviously changes the, the budget scope as well. And then the final key ratio that I'll, I'll just discuss quickly is the fund balance on hand. You want at least or a little bit more than one month on hand. And we have three, almost three and a half months on hand. So that just further kind of solidifies that we're actually managing this really well, even though we might have high ratios on our salary and benefits, we still have three and a half months of our fund balance on hand. Okay. Now, if there aren't any more questions, I'll pass it off to Melinda.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me all right? Okay, all right, good. It's a pleasure to be with you this evening and I'm just going to be very briefly discussing board membership. I have a chair, one of my roles on the board is to chair the board logistics committee along with Rachel, runaway Rachel, who also is assisting me in that this year. And one of the primary roles of that committee is to assist in recruitment of new board members and helping those candidates guide them through the process. And as well on, with some onboarding, once they have formally been appointed to the board. And I'd just like to give a great measure of thanks to both Stephanie, who is here this evening, who is, thank you, Stephanie, who has completed all of those sort of initial requirements for board membership. And we will look forward to her joining us in the future. And to Ashley, do you mind giving a wave, Ashley? Who is in the process of completing some requirements for board membership? And I won't go into depth in regards to what those are. They're kind of well-defined on the website. So if you go to the school website and you find your way to the section that says about us, there's a governance page in that section and it outlines both what what we do as board members, what are kind of the criteria for becoming a board member and as well the election process. And we have had school elections for board members, community-wide elections for the past several years. And those will be taking place the first week of May. As a board, we, there are opportunities or situations in which we are able to provide appointed board memberships. And as well, we formalize those with an election though in the spring. So if you haven't been in the school community for long, you may not have been aware that we even hold those, but we indeed do. And all community members are welcome to participate and they're an online election. And we welcome your participation. As Beau so well illustrated at the beginning or pointed out at the beginning of this evening, we are always looking for individuals who are, would like to participate at the board level in the school. So if you've ever had an inkling that that might be something that's for you, we welcome you to please just come join one of our meetings, see what you think, always feel welcome to reach out to me if you are interested in knowing more about what it, what it involves. I always welcome your questions and thoughts and you can either, if you are interested in reaching out now, you're welcome to contact me via the chat, or you can contact the board at board@mountainsage.org. And we've, would look forward to your participation. Don't hesitate to reach out and thank you for being here tonight.
Great, thanks Melinda very much and thanks Brian for your presentation. I want to mention that in addition to Brian, the other members of the finance committee are Mary and Amanda, the business manager and Liv. And Amanda's here with us tonight as well. So thanks to all of you and, and thanks to Melinda and Rachel for your work on that. In, in terms of the rest of our program, I think Melinda, under your section, there was introducing Stephanie, which she did and Ashley, which you did. So I think in terms of our formal program, we're, we're kind of wrapping up. So I think the rest of the time we can spend on Q and A. I did just repost in the chat. I think there was a part of an earlier question that didn't get responded to. So if we can kind of tackle that and get that answered and then see if we have any other questions from any of the participants here.
I can answer that one, Beau. In terms of projections for enrollment next year, again, watching that homeschool enrichment piece, but, and this number fluctuates, so much can change, especially in such a, what may be a tumultuous year, probably between 280 and 300 kids is where I would put the projections. I mean, we have currently our projections based on our lottery, our enrollment lottery that we just held, but we continue to see interests and changes through the months all the way until even after the start of the next school year.
Thanks Liv for fielding that question. Well, we still have some time, so I think we'll just hang out a little bit. If anything comes to mind, feel, please feel free to put it in the chat. We'll get those answered also. You know, there's a number of ways that as you think about some of the stuff you heard tonight, if you have a follow-up question, you can email the board with any of those questions, we'll make sure they get answered. One, one of the things that this program has done traditionally is to really make sure that we're, we're both being transparent and doing our part to provide the school community members with the information to get questions answered or to access information that they might, they might want. And I would say over the last few years, the website has really been bolstered in terms of the information that's on there and the, the availability of it. So, you know, we have the, the beat newsletter that goes out a couple of times a month that has quite a bit of information. The website is chock full of information you can access. There's a financial transparency component to the website that, that elaborates more on, on some of the things that Brian touched on. So please, if there's a question, feel free to reach out to us, follow up. And again, if, if, if you're interested in learning more about becoming a board member or if, you know, you have friends or others, you think this might be something they might be interested in, please let them know. Again, we're always happy to talk more about it and, and see if we can't get nine board members going into next year, that'd be great. So let's hang out for a little bit longer and if there's anything that pops into anybody's mind, please feel free to put in the chat or unmute yourself and, and ask a question and we'll try to get it answered. Beau, I didn't think I had anything for this town holiday, but to your point about the website, this year, in this past year, some people have asked about our, our school policies and things like that previously. Those are actually published on the website now. They're at the same level as the governance page. So just under about us, if you go there, there's a page dedicated to the school policies. So that's something that wasn't there until this school year.
And if I might just give a big shout out to Eric, he's humble, but he did a lot, all of the heavy lifting for that, which is just amazing and his level of organization as a secretary really lifts the whole board up every meeting. So just a definitely a round of applause for Eric.
Very good. All right, well, thank you again, everybody for attending. Thank you for those of you who are watching this after the fact. And if there's something that you see that brings a question to mind, please feel free to reach out to us and we'll make sure that we can get it answered. But unless anybody else wants to say anything else, I think we'll wrap it up and, and we'll stay tuned for any follow-up questions. But thanks again very much. Thank you to all the board members for all the work that you do. Thank you again to, to Liv and the administration, the faculty and staff. It's been quite a year. It's, you know, it's February 2021, kind of feels like we all went down a wormhole and hopefully we're coming back out of it. But I just can't say enough about the, the time and energy and thoughtfulness that has gone into, to keeping the school going and, and taking into account all of the competing opinions and information that's coming out, you know, daily, if not by the hour. And I think our, our school has, has done a great job of navigating the currents and hopefully the 21, 22 school year will be smooth sailing by comparison with nine board members. So keep that in mind and thanks again to everybody for participating.